Welcome. To save any confusion, we have to tonight, just a quick explanation, we have to tonight have a very quick special meeting prior to the regular meeting. The subject is record management. So please call or roll.
It's just the three of us.
Just the three of us?
Yeah, it's not the board, it's just a quick meeting for us. And then again, the purpose of this meeting is just to let you guys know that, you know, we're doing our annual due diligence for ORC and right now I have no records for disposal at this time. That was it.
Okay.
So yeah.
No action to take.
No action to take right now.
Okay. All right then, adjourned at 5:56. Everyone, welcome to the Vermillion Local School District Board of Education regular meeting for June 12, 2023. Call or roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Here.
Mrs. Innes.
Here.
Mrs. Stepp.
Here.
Mrs. Stillman.
Here.
Four members present.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. First of all, I'm sorry, Dick, it doesn't look like there is, but we don't have any of our students in the month, right?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, Pledge of Allegiance, then, please. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, lillerty and justice for all. Item four is the legislative report. Mrs. Russell is not available tonight, so there will be no report. Item, it was item four, sorry, item five, student liaison report.
There is no report for the summer.
And item six, student board member report. We don't have our student board members tonight, right?
Right, absent.
Item seven is public participation for agenda items. Each participant is allowed three minutes to speak. The time allocated or time allotted for public participation is 30 minutes. Please register your name, address, topic, and group affiliation. This one is intended for questions about agenda items. There is another public participation toward the end of the meeting. Is anyone who had signed up regarding agenda items okay? Item eight is adjournment to executive session. Recommend a resolution for the board to move into executive session for the purpose of employee compensation.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Call or roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mrs. Stillman.
Yes.
Motion approved 4-0, and the time is 6:02 PM.
Session is 6:23 PM. Item 10, I'm sorry, item nine, the superintendent's report and/or recommendations.
Yes, under number one, I recommend a resolution for the board to approve the three-year administrator contracts beginning with the '22-'23 school year as listed.
'23-'24 school year.
I'm sorry, '23-'24 school year, as listed.
I'll move.
I'll second. Questions? Call or roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mrs. Stillman.
Yes.
Motion approved 4-0.
Number two, I recommend a resolution for the board to approve the one-year administrator contract for the '23-'24 school year as listed.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Call or roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mrs. Stillman.
Yes.
Motion approved 4-0.
Number three, recommend a resolution to amend the following administrator contracts beginning with the '23-'24 school year as listed.
I'll move.
I'll second. Questions? Call or roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mrs. Stillman.
Yes.
Motion approved 4-0.
Number four, recommend a resolution to approve the one-year administrator contract for Heather Lammers, VHS Assistant Principal. She'll be on year four.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Call or roll.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mrs. Stillman.
Yes.
Motion approved 4-0.
Item 10, the treasurer reporting and/or recommendations.
Thank you. Number one, recommend a resolution for the board to approve the financial report for May 2023.
I'll move.
I'll second.
All right, going over the general fund revenue by month, through the month of May, the district received $24.5 million in general fund revenue compared to $23.5 million at this time last year and $23.7 million in fiscal year '21. As such, the district is on pace to collect slightly more than its historical average revenue for the general fund. Moving on to food service, through the month of May, we have received $804,000 in the food service fund compared to $950,000 at this time last year and $535,000 in fiscal year '21. Despite food service not being 100% subsidized by the government like last year, our revenue has been higher than forecasted, and this is primarily due to increased participation. Taking a look at all funds through the month of May, we have received $27.2 million in all funds compared to $30.2 million at this time last year and $26.6 million in fiscal year '21. We are on pace to collect its historical average revenue with the anomaly of last year with the federal funds there. Moving on to the expenditure side, through the month of May, the district expended $24.3 million from its general fund compared to $21 million at this time last year and $21.3 million in fiscal year '21. So far this year, the district has spent $4.2 million more in salaries than it did the previous year because last year we reclassed, which is a reduction of expenditure, roughly $2 million from the ARPS or funds. The remaining salary increase, $2.2 million was from moving staff to a biweekly, or moving staff from a biweekly to a bimonthly pay, as well as negotiated increases. Likewise, our retirement and insurance benefits have increased, creating an additional $325,000 more this year than the previous year. Purchased services this year are $506,000 more than last year. Again, this is because the district entered into an additional lease for Apple products at the beginning of the year, which was $108,000, and repairs to the baseball and softball field, which was $264,000. And then from that, there's also increased rates and adjustments for other types of contracts that we have. This year, we also purchased a bus for roughly $110,000 in total. We've spent $3.3 million more this year in the general fund than we were at this time last year. Looking at food service through the month of May, we have expended $807,000 in food service compared to $823,000 at this time last year and $582,000 in fiscal year '21. Negotiated salary increases and just the cost of food are the main drivers for this Taking a look at all funds for expenditures through the month of May, the district has spent $27.9 million compared to $26.2 at this time last year and $24.2 in fiscal year '21. The district is on pace to spend more than its historical averages, and it's for reasons mentioned in the general fund spending. Moving on to the cash, through the month of May, the district has a total of $19 million in cash in the general fund compared to $20.4 million at this time last year and $18.5 in fiscal year '21. Food service cash, we have a total of $370,000 compared to $312,000 at this time last year and $126,000 in fiscal year '21. And then when you take all of our funds for all of our cash, we have a total of $23.6 million this year compared to $25.6 in fiscal year '22 and $21.8 million, $21.9 million in fiscal year '21. Going through our cash summary report, we have three accounts that were negative at the close of May, the athletic fund, the 507 ARP fund, and our Title I fund. Our Title I fund, we've received the PCR, so that one is back to zero. The only negative account we have is the 507 and the 300. And then moving on to our investments through the month of May, we've earned a total of $301,632.60 on interest compared to $142,840 at this time last year. This is a difference of $158,792.60 or 111% more. That is all I have.
Call or roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mrs. Stillman.
Yes.
Motion approved 4-0. Number two, recommend a resolution for the board to approve the 2024 initial tax budget for Ritter Public Library, and that is attachment B.
I'll move.
I'll second.
In that attachment, that's just them showing their estimated revenues and estimated expenditures. Their board has already approved it. Ohio Revised Code requires us to approve it as well.
All right, call or roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mrs. Stillman.
Yes.
Motion approved 4-0. Number three, recommend a resolution for the board to approve the following donations: $636 from Main Street Threads to sponsor a student to Washington DC; $5.90 from Sarah Caudell to pay a negative lunch balance at SMS; the entire balance from the class of 2023 to the class of 2024; $1,200 from Roger Hearing for the Donald Hearing Scholarship; and $4,700 from Grace's Kitchen to pay outstanding student fees for the class of 2023.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Just a comment that, you know, every month we usually have donations to approve on here, and it's very generous by those folks that do it, especially for good reasons like throwing out $5.90 to take care of a lunch balance. That's what good people do, so much appreciated. Call or roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mrs. Stillman.
Yes.
Motion approved 4-0. Number four, recommend a resolution for the board to approve the 2023-2024 Administrator Supervisor Central Office Salary Schedule, and that is attachment C.
I'll move. I'll second.
Any questions? Okay, call or roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mrs. Stillman.
Abstained.
Three yeas, one abstention, motion approved. Number five, recommend a resolution for the board to approve the fiscal year 2024 temporary appropriations with the 412 certificate, and that is attachment D.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Ohio Revised Code requires us to have appropriation measure in place starting July 1. This is just a temporary appropriation measure until we can get the fiscal year started. Gives us the spending authority that you see here. And then again, by July or August, we'll have the final appropriate, or the permanent appropriations, if you will.
Call or roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mrs. Stillman.
Yes.
Motion approved 4-0. Number six, recommend a resolution for the board to approve the fiscal year 2023 final appropriations with the 412 certificate, and that is attachment E.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay, call or roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mrs. Stillman.
Yes.
Motion approved 4-0. Number seven, recommend a resolution for the board to approve the request to Erie County for an advancement of taxes.
I'll move.
Annually, Lorain County requires us to request for an advancement, and then Erie County actually requires it biannually for us to do it. So all it is, the county has our tax money sitting there. Rather than waiting for August, if we request an advancement, they'll put smaller installments starting in July.
All right, call or roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mrs. Stillman.
Yes.
Motion approved 4-0. And number eight, recommend a resolution for the board to grant authority to the treasurer to make all necessary advances and transfers and appropriation modifications for closing fiscal year 2023, which is June 30, 2023, for the district to be compliant to the Ohio Revised Code and the Order of State's Office requirements in reporting to the board at the July 2023 regular board meeting on all actions that I've taken. So any changes that I've made, I will report them to the board here at the next board meeting.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Call or roll.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mrs. Stillman.
Yes.
Motion approved 4-0. Thank you.
Item 11 is the consent agenda. The superintendent and treasurer recommend that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda items. Action by the Board of Education in adoption of the consent agenda means that all items are adopted by one vote unless a member of the board, the treasurer, or the superintendent requests that any such item be removed from the consent agenda and voted on separately. Item 1, the minutes of the May 15, 2023 regular meeting. Item 2, approve revisions to district policies for the second reading as listed on the agenda. Item 3, policies requiring annual review as listed on the agenda. Item 4, approve the updated agreement with the Lorain County ESC to provide two specialized services, which includes school psychologists, educational programs, two slots for the pathway to success, consulting, literacy coaching, and other specialized services. Pricing is based on the consortium. Item 5, adopt or approve and adopt the nutrition standards policy that considers requirements of ORC 3313.814 that governs the types of food and beverages that may be sold on the premises of its school. Item 6, approve the agreement between Vermillion Local School District and the Ohio Schools Council for food management consulting services. Item 7, approve the agreement with the Lakota Way preventative services for alcohol, tobacco, and other mental, emotional, and behavioral services. Item 8, approve the agreement with positive education program for pupil services for the 2023-24 contract year. Item 9, approve the agreement with North Point ESC for services for the contract year of 2023-24. Item 10, approve the employment actions, resignation, Katie Arco wrote Assistant Principal VHS, effective July 31, 2023; retirement, Jane Mauser Westdrager, effective June 30, 2023. Item 12, certified one-year teacher contracts for the 2023-24 school year to the following as listed on the agenda. Item 13, special project rate of $34 an hour for the additional four hours for the fifth grade Greenfield Village trip to Kelly Frederick, Janelle Lamar, Catherine Vecchio, Allison Keating, and Steve Massey. Item 14, special project rate $34 an hour contract for the summer to the 2023-22-23 school year to those listed on the agenda. Item 15, the per diem contract for the summer of the 2023 school year to Brooks Papern, 20 hours, two school evaluations. Item 16, approve the payment of $100 per day from the August 14, 2023 through August 17, 2023 for new teacher orientation for those listed on the agenda. Item 17, approve the one-year classified limited contract for the '23-24 school year to Molly Royster, Administrative Assistant at SMS. Item 18, approve the contract of up to 28 hours for the balance of the '22-23 school year to Molly Royster, Administrative Assistant, SMS, for training. Item 19, summer grounds contract for the '23, for '23 to Jacob Webb and Malachi Howd at $15 per hour. Item 20, special project contract for $34 per hour to, for 43.5 hours for the '23-22, '23 school year to Madison Kessler for after-school activities. Any items that need to be removed? Okay, get a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second. Call or roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mrs. Stillman.
Yes.
Motion approved 4-0.
Item 13 is the dates and location of upcoming board meetings. Meetings still be held in the Vermillion High School Commons unless otherwise notified. We have a regular meeting Monday, July 10 at 6:00 PM, a regular meeting Monday, August 14 at 6:00 PM, and a regular meeting Monday, September 11 at 6:00 PM. Item 14, public participation. The public participation section of the Board of Education's agenda is specifically designed for the public to address the board with their complements, concerns, ideas, or questions. The board welcomes your comments. If you wish to address the board regarding an issue, the board would remind you of two things. First, your comments should be factual and respectful of others. And second, before coming to the board with a specific problem, you should have first addressed the problem with the appropriate teacher, staff member, or administrator. This meeting of the Board of Education is in public for the purpose of conducting school district business. Time allotted for public participation is 30 minutes. Based on the number of folks that are signed up, we're going to ask that everyone be limited to three minutes per. So we're going to go down the list of folks that have signed up. First is Joseph Jones.
Got a few questions. First question is, I would like some clarification on the bylaws as they pertain to what happens during the first, second, and third readings. Are, when you're changing bylaws, are they being discussed? Where are they being discussed? Is it on lawyer's recommendation that you guys are changing these bylaws? And then, where is the hard copy of your bylaws? Is it on the school's website? Because what I can see, there might be some discrepancies there due to these laws being changed and then actually getting uploaded to the website and being exact. So I had a question of that. Also wanted to inquire about if I want any of my children to attend LifeWise Academy this fall. Is the school going to help and facilitate in any way with getting news out, or we just have to get you a letter that says, hey, we'd like to call your kid out for an hour for religious instruction like the law allows? How are we going to handle that in the future? And is the school going to participate or allow parents to say if they want this to be involved? Thank you.
Mr. Jones, I'll answer your first question. So we work with a company called Neova, which is basically a group of lawyers. And what they do is they monitor changes to the law, both Ohio law, federal law, administrative codes, et cetera. And if something changes that affects a board policy, then twice a year, we get a set of policy recommendations from them where they say, these laws, these codes have changed. In order for your policies to remain up to date and current with the law, we recommend these changes. And so each policy will be listed there. It's in, it's in a format where you can go in and see what they're recommending, what your current policy is, and then you decide whether you want to make the change that they're recommending, okay? The vast, vast majority of them, you have to accept them because the law has changed and it's requiring you to make the change. Sometimes there are options within the changes. You can choose certain things, yes, we want this in, no, we don't want that in. A lot of that's based on what your current policy is, okay? So that's my job is to take those, review our current policies, compare them to what they're making recommendations about, and then recommend those to the board, recommend those changes to the board. So when it comes to the first reading, second reading, the point of that is for the board to have the opportunity to look at these, examine them, look at my recommendations, but also so that they're out there for the public to see that we're changing these policies. If you have comments, questions, concerns about them, then you have another month to bring those to the attention of myself or the board. And then after that second read, the second reading is when they get approved by the board. So basically, the first and second reading is to give people a chance to look at and review what's being recommended for changes.
On the second reading? Why would you do second reading before you move to adopt those policies? You approved them for the second read, but you didn't move to adopt those?
No, the second reading is the adoption.
So that is the adoption.
The second, the adoption occurs on the second reading. So when they're voting on it at the second reading, that is the adoption of the policy.
The second reading is your second read.
No.
Then, after you approve the second read, you move to adopt the policies that are by law. So you say, no, but for your board to report it, yes.
That's not the standard for how school districts adopt policies.
You adopt the policy, here's the school district, this guy's by law.
Okay, appreciate it.
You didn't answer your question, Mr. Jones.
We'll move on.
Yeah, the only other concern that I have is that it seems to be if it's a couple times a year, there could be gaps between the policy being accepted by the district and actually being something that you guys followed and actually being uploaded to the site and becoming.
So as soon as they're approved by the board, then like, if there was a second reading here, these listed policies will then be sent, will notify Neova, these policies have been approved by the board, and then they upload them within a week or two. We get a notification back saying all the policies that were approved by your board on X date are uploaded to the website, and they're all available on our website, on our board policies.
So we do get notification back?
Yes.
They've been done?
They tell us that it's been uploaded, yeah.
So appreciate the input. You know, maybe at some point, we just do a sanity check and make sure that it actually happened.
No, we do. I always go back and make sure, yeah. Because I have had instances where something got lost in the shuffle and it didn't get uploaded or didn't get changed, and I just tell them, hey, you didn't make the change, you have the changes, please upload it. So it does happen.
And then Joe, we'll, because I anticipate there might be more discussion about LifeWise as the meeting goes on, we'll talk a little bit more about it as the meeting goes, okay?
All right, thank you.
All right, Eric Jones.
I wanted to echo Joe's comments about the changes to the consent agenda. For transparency reasons, that's why we have a board meeting, it's open to the public. When you make all of these changes, are these bylaw changes, are they getting emailed to the different board members and they're reading them on their own time? So they're all well aware of all the changes, they know exactly what's?
We get copies that are, that are like worthy. The changes to the policy will be highlighted and read, or something will be struck through so that we can see without reading, without reading a word, you know, beginning to end, we can see exactly where changes were made and go back and make sure we understand it.
Great. For transparency reasons, though, that's amazing that you guys have that, but for us who want to follow along at home or whatever, it's almost impossible, I mean, to know what's going on here. I have no idea what bylaw, you know, is being changed. I can read the bylaw. I know that you're changing it in some form, manner, shape, or whatever. But I don't know what you're changing it to.
Mr. Jones, if you, so if you see on the agenda that we have four policies and bylaws that we're making changes to for the first read, you can just request that the changes that are being recommended, and we'll give them to you.
Right, but wouldn't it be easier for transparency reasons to put that on the agenda? I mean, if you already have the list?
They're attached, they're attached to the agenda for the board members. And if people have one down, one, they just request it, we'll give them to you.
Right, you have to do a public record request for that information. So like, when we're sitting here in the meeting and you guys are voting on that stuff, we don't have any idea what you're voting on.
Well, that's why there's the first and second read. So the first read is, yes, we're going to look at changing these policies, then you have a whole nother month to request them.
Right, but you don't know what's being changed, you know what I mean?
I was going to say, then you just say, you ask us for what the changes are, and we'll give you the same thing we give you.
I can work with that.
Does it have to be a public record request, or is that something where if it's going to be in our agenda, there could be a couple of copies made available at board?
Yeah, that's the thing, is we just don't know how many people want it. We could, we could do that.
So start with five or six.
Yeah, I mean, if we had a couple, maybe if we had a couple, just because I got to believe that, that a lot of people aren't going to want to take the time to read it, but there may be people who want to sit down and read it and understand it.
Right.
Sure.
Get this moving out, really.
Do you want to have participation on the agenda? I don't think so.
Civil request.
Can, I'm sorry, I didn't catch the treacherous report number four. Who moved in second?
I move, Shelley second.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Next is Merleyn West.
Hi, I'm Merleyn West, Thompson Road. So, I'm just going to read.
Sure, no problem.
I'd like to voice opposition against a resolution that would allow LifeWise Academy access to Vermillion schools, as I do not believe that's the answer to closing the achievement gap, as their website so advertised. The best answer to closing an achievement gap is to leave instruction to people who have degrees in education and in their contact fields. This is the best answer to closing any existing achievement gap and teaching character to our students. The district is already doing a fine job in both regards, and we should leave them to do it. Thank you.
Number Barton.
Dr. Heil, of the board members, I'm writing a concern about the upcoming vote to allow LifeWise in our school. I am against allowing this curriculum in our school for many reasons, reasons you probably are already aware of, some that I want to read right now as alumnus, a parent of school aged children, and of many schools, of many in the school system. I am not often concerned with the board's curriculum choices. You guys are professionals, and I think education choices need to be left with the professionals that have the experience. You guys know better than I. Most of the time, I can ignore the ignorant ends of individuals to complain and harass the educators, but this time, I cannot stay silent. I do request that you decline LifeWise. One, this school, this school has a tight schedule, and instruction schedule is hard with minimal interruptions. How much instruction time are you denying the kinders through third grade by sending them out and then bringing them back? That is an interruption that cannot be ignored. With that instruction time being taken away, what is being missed during the school day? Everything that is learned at school is imperative. That is why attendance is so important. If you miss things, you're not there. So, what are these children missing? Are they going to decrease the instructional time for art, music, or gym even more than they already have? Have we not taken away from the arts in the past? Let's discuss the importance of art and music. Music, did you know that music is processed through both hemispheres of the brain? That is the, that is the majority of the organ. Music ignites the thought process, increases emotional understanding. Music has the capability not only to prepare the student for learning, but it also teaches history, science, and math. The namfoundation.org 2023 supports my above thoughts, and they go into more detail about how music can improve recall and retention. How it increases math achievements, increases reason, and is shown to increase scores during those daunting SATs. Music is healing and motivating. Our children need music. Music is the foundation that we all need. Personal experience, just this past school year, my son came home and told me about The Weller Man. He was so intrigued by what he learned in that music that he needed to share with me. We looked it up more together, and it was a fascinating story of history and hardships of life. Music not only taught him history, but it was also a conversation starter for me and my son. The music concert that was presented by the second graders was an amazing show. What a treat to see our small children showing their musical talents. They did fantastic. I am excited to see how well they do this upcoming school year. Art is also essential in our expression. Art is another medium to support and teach history and math. It is vital to our children's education and cultivation. I can delve further into it, but I think you get the point that arts are a central part of the curriculum. Another personal experience I would like to share with you. My niece has won a scholastic key over the last three years. This year, she won a gold key. Gold key. My niece is an introvert, but you can see her emotion and her growth with her art. It is important to me that my niece is able to express herself as she grows and excels in art. She, like many kids, need art. They need opportunity for growth. Different from art and music, gym is still very important. It's not a secret that our society as a whole suffers from inactivity and can be an inconvenience diet. Students need physical education, not only to learn how to exercise, but also as foundation to teamwork, healthy habits, and mental clarity. In fact, I would argue they need physical education daily.
Ms. Barton?
Yes.
Thank you, first of all, for your comments. Really appreciate them. Just in fairness to everyone, we're a good little bit over three minutes. Can I wrap, can we wrap it?
Yeah, I'm almost done.
Thank you.
I feel that I've given many examples for declining LifeWise, but it's going to be a few, a few more pesty details. Is that if you let religion disrupt the curriculum, you need to allow all of the religions the opportunity. Would we be having this conversation if it was about paganism or the Islamic religion? And let's talk about politics, because this is a political play of the right extremist wing to let religion in our, in our schools, and we need to not do it. I request that you decline LifeWise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robin Ashton.
Hello, I'm Robin Ashton. I'm on Dogland Lane. I'd like to talk. I'd like to speak in favor of the LifeWise program that has been provided by our community individuals, putting their time into an off-campus character building opportunity that does not interfere with curricular activities and is provided for the United Constitution. When I was a high school student, I did sign up for a class called the Bible is Literature. And I remember learning about the beautiful language of the Psalms and the wisdom of Solomon, courage of David, the life lessons of Abraham, who showed faith in Moses, who showed perseverance. And you might say to me, well, that was decades ago, Mrs. Ashton, and that has no relevance in our curriculum today, but I, I, I may to do it with you. You may say that my experience, that the Bible does not correlate with today's program for some of our high school students today, but it does. And the Bible is relevant to life struggles all of us in our, in our, in our lives face and have faced. And it does speak to the needs of us, whether young or old. I'd like to sway each of us away from, I'd like to also answer Ms. Barton's wonderful comment about the need for, for art, music, and gym. I totally agree. She was intrigued by the historical man, The Weller Man. And I have to also agree that there are individuals that are mentioned in the Bible, that these characters, they can also be added to our curriculum. I mean, after-school curriculum, extracurricular, that can speed to the, the character building and the inspiration that you were talking about with emotions and history and thought and, and art and music. And I, I would like to add to that. I hope that we're not just trying to push this through with anger, you know? Let nothing be done through strife for vain glory, but in loneliness of mind, let he just do other better than themselves. This is the message of the Bible, and it is something that is foreign to our, our culture and our society. And, you know, love is patient, love is kind. You can argue with these character building things that I think are needed and that don't interfere with a classroom activity, but are provided in hours in by individuals in our community that have organized this, this LifeWise program. I hope that you'll throw your hat into the arena in favor of the LifeWise program that has been already spent hours preparing for. You know, I can't help thinking of The Road Less Traveled by Robert Frost. I think my high school experience, when I encountered the Bible is Literature, it kind of put me on a road that was less traveled. And it has made a lot of difference in my life. In fact, it has made all the difference for my way of thinking and, and inspiration to me that I think it's worth considering in our, in our after-school program called LifeWise. Thank you.
Thank you. Gina Anderson.
Good evening, and I'm thanking the board for all of the work and sacrifice that you do for the community here in Vermillion. I think we would all acknowledge that this is a special time in history in that we have a hard time trusting one another and believing in what is being said and what is being told to us. With that thought in mind and knowing that Vermillion is a wonderful community to live in, and I know that we as neighbors help and support one another always when the need arises. So, I have great faith and confidence in our community. What I'm wondering is, then, why you do not publish your attachments for the community and those attending the meeting to be aware of and informed of? Because it certainly would facilitate an element of trust and transparency between the board and the community that you are trying to lead and guide. I think that would go a long ways to build a good relationship between, like I said, the board and the community. Incidentally, I haven't been to a board meeting in a long time. I did attend about one time. They're very different. The room is very much larger. And another thing that I would like to recommend is microphones for the board members. It's very difficult to hear the conversation when we're sitting that far away. You have a microphone for the public to speak on, so they can hear.
We actually, we actually do have microphones, ma'am. Maybe they're not, maybe they're not picking up our voices for some reason.
Well, I don't think, at least where I would think they were picking up your voice, it was very difficult to hear.
I believe you.
And I also think that people that are hearing in here would especially have a difficult time, and we want to include those members as well. Then, as far as LifeWise is concerned, I think it really doesn't matter at this point in time. The question isn't what it does or doesn't do for the curriculum, or what it takes away from the students or adds to them. The question is whether the parents have the right, as noted by the Supreme Court, to have their child dismissed from school for the purpose of religious instruction as long as it doesn't take tax dollars, as long as they have parental permission, and as long as they don't use facilities in the school building. I believe that that right has been already given to parents. And so, that's the question. You know, are the parents going to be able to assert their rights irregardless? Because there's going to be lots of opinions on, on who thinks what about the nature of the excuse for religious instruction. And by the way, it doesn't note what kind of religious instruction. But I think the question is what rights the parents have in this matter. And so, I would like to encourage you to accept the Supreme Court decision and the rights that the parents do have to have their child excused from school for certain purposes, this being one of them. And again, I thank you for your attention. I hope and pray that this plan can work together as one, as I hope we, we have in our hearts to do.
Thank you. Leona Phillips.
Leona Phillips, Roslin Road. I would like to express opposition to the LifeWise program that would take away the valuable learning and developmental time from our children, especially by replacing our gym and study time with religion. Why is it a public school system allowing kids to use school time for religious learning? Offering opportunity to practicing Christians while leaving out other religions or children that are not religious is simply not fair and would cause divide or worse bullying. No matter your reason for not supporting this program, I think the one argument that we can all get behind is that Christian Bible study should not take, should not take place during public school hours. If parents wanted their children to be exposed to religion, then they would take them to the church outside of school hours. The current curriculum of school today is very difficult and demanding to what it was in the past. Licensed, trained instructors are providing the education they are able to do under the current challenges.
Thank you. So, that's our list for public participation. Can everyone hear me? Okay?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll try to be as loud as I can. I'd like to make a comment, just because we've had a lot of discussion on LifeWise. I'd like to make a comment on LifeWise. Last week, I attended the, the LifeWise presentation at Germans Villa. And a credit to the LifeWise folks, they, they did a great job putting on a presentation, gave a lot of information, brought some speakers in. And I hung around afterward and had the opportunity to talk to a lot of really good, nice people who I believe have the best intentions. On the other end of that coin, we've received a lot of emails and calls, you know, that are in opposition to LifeWise for a lot of the various reasons you heard tonight. And a lot of other very good people, especially our school administrators, our principals, our superintendent, have voiced adamantly that they're not okay with surrendering instructional time for LifeWise. And the LifeWise folks will tell you that they've got the models. They can schedule our schedules for us and make it so that nothing gets missed. Well, the reality is, at the elementary school, we don't do study halls. We don't do, you know, I mean, you're either missing a special, that, that art, or that gym, or that, you know, music, whatever, or, or you're missing a lunch period or something like that. It's not clean. It's not pretty, and it's not easy, no matter, no matter what anyone tells you. This is, this is my personal opinion, by the way. So, you know, with that in mind, I really believe that there is a path to allow people to put their kids into this LifeWise program if they wanted to. And I agree, parent choice is parent choice. You should be allowed to put your kid in the program. I think personally, as a board member, I do not believe that we should be surrendering part of our school day to do it. And what I can't wrap my head around right now is that the folks from LifeWise are 100% unwilling to discuss a before or after-school program. They won't, they won't allow a before or after-school program. It has to be during school hours, which kind of makes you feel uneasy, because why? I don't understand the whole reason why. I mean, they tell me that people won't participate, kids, parents can't get their kids there, whatever. It just feels like a, like an agenda. And I, and I just don't believe that right now, as a board member, it's something that I can support. It, if it was a before or after-school program, I would support it, because I don't have any issue with a parent that wants to get their kids some character building or religion or whatever. I mean, I'm, I belong to the Catholic Church in Vermillion, and I believe that, you know, I believe in the Bible. I believe in God, and, and I think I've raised my kids to do the same. I just don't necessarily think that it's part of our school day.
And I'd like to, I'd like to make a comment as well. I know that there is a law in place. The law says that the school board may approve. It does not say has to approve. So, whether the, I'm speaking. I'm speaking.
She's speaking, please.
What you're telling me is true.
No, she's not.
All right. As I was saying, because I have looked it up, and what I'm saying is correct, and as a board, it is our responsibility to decide whether this is the proper thing to bring into the schools. I am not for LifeWise being part of the school day. I am not for disrupting our instructional time. As a board member, I have reached out to administrators, teachers, students, parents, and other community members to have this discussion. So, it's not just me in my own little world. I have done my due diligence. I have talked to a number of people. I have researched it online, and some of the, there's not much data there to support what I've seen. It's just, yeah, it's a great program, but I, there's not much data there at all. And I agree with Mr. Habermell that if you want to have it as an after-school program, before-school program, I know Dr. Heil has mentioned that to Pastor Cliff, and can't do it that way. So, the fact that it has to be during the school day tells me it's not about the kids. Not about the kids at all.
So, my opinion on this, I try to make my decisions with as much knowledge and as much information as I can. I have spoken to administrators. I have spoken to staff. I have spoken to community members. We have reached out to LifeWise and asked for a list of schools which participate. They refused to give that. They said they don't want to put that out there because they don't want those schools to be targeted. But you're asking us to put our school in this position. So, you're telling me that our school might be targeted if we get into this program? We have asked for data to back up all of their claims. We have received no data that I am aware of. So, I'm asking for data. I'm asking for lists, which they're not giving us. So, to me, it makes me feel like there's something hidden, because otherwise, they would give me the list of the schools, so we can reach out to these schools and talk to them about how the program is and how is it going, and is it disrupting your day? I can't, I'm, I'm speaking. I'm tired of asking, I'm tired of asking you to stop interrupting us.
Yeah, I can say something.
Okay, I'm not listening.
Did you have any?
So, we have asked for data. We have asked for lists, and we haven't received anything. So, to me, I can't make my decision very well if I'm not given the information I'm asking. I have to go out and find it myself. So, the information that I'm finding myself, you're being extreme. So the information that I'm finding myself, you're being extremely rude. She is not being rude.
Mrs. Heinz.
So.
I'm sorry, one second.
You're okay.
Ms. Heinz. One, one second, please, one second, please. One second, please. Ms. Heinz, can you hear me? Mrs. Heinz, Mrs. Byer, I'm sorry, which.
Yeah, I don't know why it was not safe for it to take.
You can hear me okay, right? You can hear me okay, right?
She's not.
If you continue to interrupt board meetings, you'll be, you'll be.
I'm not, what are you gonna do, can I?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's not a thing. It's very good, Joe, that's not a thing.
Okay, so as I was saying, we have offered compromises for before and after-school programs. They absolutely will not negotiate with that. We have, I have to, at this time, because they haven't given me the information that I need, I have to trust my administrators, I have to trust my staff, and I have to trust the community members that we have in this community, and although there are people for it, the majority of people that I've talked to are against it. So with the information that I have, I cannot support this as a during-school program. Before, yes. After, yes, but not during our instructional time. Thank you.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, it seems like you guys are making a vote now, is this?
No, it's not a vote.
You guys just making public statements?
This is my opinion.
There is, because, because a lot of questions.
It sounds like you're voting on it.
We're not voting on it, because a lot of questions have been asked.
There's no vote on the agenda.
And I feel like, I feel like folks come up and they speak at the board meeting, the last two meetings, and I feel like it's appropriate to have some discussion.
Will you be voting on this, though, in the future?
I don't, I don't anticipate it.
So how about parents who still want to do this? Our administrator's going to fear with the parents' ability to make this happen?
You have the right to take your kid out of school anytime you want.
Yep.
Okay. So, but I didn't get an answer on that, I'm sorry. If I can enroll my kid into this for one hour a week, is he going to be held true in, or is he going to be held accountable for it by an administrator because they don't agree with my decision?
There are sort of laws in the state of Ohio about the number of hours that your student can miss school before there are consequences. We don't have a choice about that. That is a policy that was handed to us by the state. So if, if your student would, would miss a certain number of hours of school, then there's a point at which we have to hold a truancy hearing, okay?
So what you're saying is, yes.
Well, I'm just telling you, that, that's the law, so.
So you would count it as an hour missed, right?
Correct.
Because it's not built into a schedule, Joe.
It's not built into a schedule, and it's not.
So what about the Supreme Court and the law that gives that, and the governor, the lieutenant governor of the state that says this is available and he's behind it, but you guys say or not? So do we listen to the lieutenant governor, or do we listen to you?
Well, the state law says that the school board may permit religious instruction, release time for religious instruction. It doesn't say they shall, it says they may. So it's up to the board to decide whether they are going to permit students.
You guys know that these two people, over and over again, have won over this. Why would you put money into that, for that community? Why would you put us through?
Again, the laws, the law says that the board has the authority to decide whether the program is permitted or not.
They have the authority to decide whether or not you can repeat or remove them.
And you do have that right.
All I hear is her. I can't hear.
It seems like, kind of like.
And I also feel like, exactly, clearly said after school. You could enroll your kid after school when they're ready to run.
Yeah, the board, the board would be absolutely open to a before or after-school program.
Or summer school program.
Yeah, I mean, I just.
I think that's the best look for you guys, though?
Yes, I do.
We don't want you guys to have that, but you can take care of our preschool problem that we have, you can pay for it.
We have probably, we have probably about 100 kids that get dropped off at about 8:30 in the morning over here at the elementary school during the summer for the boys and girls club. So there's a need out there for, for people to have something for their kids, and, and you know, if you want to kick a program off and trial it somewhere, I would think that you would be willing to, you know, maybe trial something in the summertime, or trial it before school, trial it after school, and see what kind of feedback and, and receivable you get, right? But, but it's just a non-starter. Now, we've been told it is a non-starter, so I don't know how we can, with a good conscience, go and, you know, implement something that has, that has a big opposition, as well as a big, you know, there are proponents, but a lot of opposition as well. So I think because we're willing to make a path, because we're willing to make an avenue for them to at least try this, I think that's fair. But anyway, I think everyone's had a chance to speak. Anyone else? We're good? TV.
I will just say, I come at this, I have been working in a public school for 12 years, so my hope as my spot on the board is to always keep the educators in mind, and I do know that this is something that is not best for the educators as far as educating the children. There are lots, there is an 86-page comprehensive school counseling program for Vermillion. There is a lot being done throughout the school day for character building. These are not skills that, as an educator, we definitely see the need for all of these skills to be taught, but I, I'm in agreeance, I don't believe that the time is during the school day.
Okay. All right, thank you, everyone. Item 15 is motion to adjourn. A second. Call roll, please. Mr. Habermell. Yes. Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mrs. Stillman.
Yes.
Motion approved 4-0, and the time is 7:16 PM.